I will call the February 11th meeting of Dublin City Council back to order. And if I could please have Lieutenant Tabernick and Lieutenant Lutansy step up here for me, please. Who are about to be our two newest lieutenants with the Dublin Police Department. If you'd be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, gentlemen. And we will turn our special presentations over to Dana McGinn.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce both Lieutenant Greg Lutansy, Greg Lutansy and his wife Ashley, as well as Lieutenant Nick Tabernick, his wife Sarah, and their families. I just want to personally congratulate them for enduring the selection process and successfully being selected to the position of lieutenant in the Dublin Police Department. It's a high honor and obviously something we place a great deal of high trust and faith in. And I know these gentlemen are going to do a terrific job. And I just want to say thanks to their families here publicly for all the great support that you provided these gentlemen through their careers and through this process. And with that, I'm going to hand it right over to Chief Von Eckersper.
Mayor, before we bring them up to swear a men, I just want to say 2019 is going to be memorable, I think, for the city and for Dublin Police Department because of all the opportunities for leadership at the police department. We're doing over 12 promotions this year. We started out with Deputy Chief Pice, who's in the audience with us, and then we followed it up with Lieutenants Lutansy and Tabernick. I just got to say, it's a proud moment for me to see them reach this point in their career. They have shown, ever since they started with the police department, they've shown a talent for leadership and a passion for law enforcement that just stood out everywhere in their career. And they've moved very quickly to this point, and we're very, very happy to have them part of our command staff. I'd just like to introduce some of the folks here today, if I could, for the occasion. So, we've already talked about Ashley, who's here, Greg's wife, Sarah, Nick's wife, is here with their children, Braden and Mackenzie, and then Nick's son, Austin, Nick's mom, Anna Marie. Come on, guys, you have to stand up, Anna Marie. Because we're...
You have to come up.
That's right. Greg and Kathy Drew, Sarah's mom and dad, and then Tammy Weaver, Ash's mom. I'm going to make you stand up. So, without further ado, Mayor, were you going to do the honors?
Sure. You want me to come down there? Chief, are they coming up here?
And you have to...
I got them.
You have...
I got them.
I don't think we need it. We can do it. Come on down.
Come on down. Okay, who wants to go first? I thought he said, "I'm going first," and then he walked away. Okay, you ready? I Nicholas A. Turb- Turb- Tabernick.
I Nicholas A. Tabernick.
Tabernick, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties...
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties...
...of Police Lieutenant of the City of Dublin.
Of Police Lieutenant of the City of Dublin.
And will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability...
...preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution of the United States...
Constitution of the United States.
...and of the State of Ohio.
And the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the City of Dublin, Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the City of Dublin, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks, chief.
Are you sure you want to sign?
Yes, sir.
No turning back now. Ready?
Yes, sir.
I Gregory M. Lutansy.
I Gregory M. Lutansy.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
...the duties of Police Lieutenant for the City of Dublin.
Sorry.
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
...the duties of Police Lieutenant...
The duties of Police Lieutenant.
...for the City of Dublin.
For the City of Dublin.
And will...
And will...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...preserve...
Preserve.
...protect...
Protect.
...and defend...
And defend.
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
...and the State of Ohio.
And the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the City of Dublin, Ohio.
And the ordinances and charter of the City of Dublin, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Quick signature. You guys want to take your family? Just go up there and take the picture. We're here for you. Go on up. This is important stuff. Just go up. Sure, that's a hijack away.
Boss, the mayor gave you permission to hijack council meetings?
This is the most important thing we're going to be doing tonight, so hijack away.
Can we get one of the... Mom and Dad, Mom and... Can't you get one of the...
I can do it. I have an eagle coat.
Yeah, it should... It should... Mackenzie, I can... I'm lying. Swish, little... And they'll hold it.
I'm just going to go down. Oh, I did. It's important stuff. Just go up.
Sure, that's a hijack away.
Boss, the city man... Or the mayor gave you permission to hijack council meetings?
This is the most important thing we're going to be doing tonight, so hijack away.
Can we get... Can we get one of the... Mom and Dad, Mom and... Can't you get one of the...
I can do it. I have an eagle coat. Mm-hmm. No problem.
Yeah, it should... It should... Mackenzie, I can... I'm lying. Swish, little... And they'll hold it. I'm just going to go down. Oh, I did. It's important stuff. Just go up.
Sure, that's a hijack away.
Boss, the city man... Or the mayor gave you permission to hijack council meetings?
This is the most important thing we're going to be doing tonight, so hijack away.
Can we get... Can we get one of the... Mom and Dad, Mom and... Can't you get one of the...
I can do it. I have an eagle coat. Mm-hmm. No problem. Okay.
Take it down. Take it down.
City council members.
Take it down.
City manager, Chief Von Eckersper, Deputy Chief Pice, appreciate you having the confidence in Greg and I to carry out these lawful duties, so we really appreciate that. Most importantly, I want to thank my family, my mom who flew in from Hilton Head area, my in-laws, Greg and Kathy Drew, my beautiful wife, who has supported me the entire way throughout my whole career. Wouldn't be here without her, without the rest of my family, and then my handsome little son, Austin, as well. I can't tell you how much I appreciate the support from all, from everyone in this room. Thank you.
Just to follow up on what Lieutenant Tabernick said, we do want to thank the members of council, the city manager, Homer Rogers, those who played a part in this process for us, as well as Chief Von Eckersper and Deputy Chief Pice for their insight and guidance throughout all of our careers with the police department. Again, first and foremost, I want to thank my wife and my mother-in-law for being here. Unfortunately, my parents couldn't make it, but I think they're watching live, so I'd like to thank them as well. So, I just want to let both the members of council, the city manager, and those of you that stand before us today know that the administration at the police department, you can have full confidence in. We will continue to carry on the strong tradition of excellence that we have been known for in the years past. We will continue to keep this city safe and promote the Dublin brand. Thank you. And congratulations to both lieutenants and to you as well, chief. This, I know I'm very confident, speaking on behalf of council, that the quality of individuals that have come through this police department and that are with us now is truly extraordinary. And there is nothing that happens in this community that is more important than the safety that you provide to us and the sacrifices that your families make to allow you to come to work, to protect this community. We greatly appreciate. It does not go unnoticed, Deputy Chief Pice, there is not a better police officer that's put on the uniform in this country, and our two lieutenants are in that same vein. So, I know that it is... And I worked for many, many years as a county prosecutor with the Dublin Police Department and then as a council member and as fortunately being the mayor, there is not a better organization or a more well-run police department in the United States of America than the Dublin Police Department. So, we thank you for all the sacrifices that you make for us because you're the ones that keep us safe, and we greatly appreciate what you do for our community. And you can't get up and leave if you want to. You don't have to stay here for the whole meeting. These kids are not wanting to stick around. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
So, Scott, you're not going to have some kind of complex argument that half the room got up and left? Didn't even have a chance to say it. So, welcome, Scott.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. If I may, Mayor, I'd also like to introduce Frank Wilson, who's one of your city council reps on our board that's been kind enough to attend tonight.
Frank.
So, thank you. A couple of quick updates. We have launched a real in-depth research project to kind of gauge future messaging, what actually we can do to sell and market the City of Dublin in the future to visitors. And we're doing a lot of different audiences, obviously visitors, stakeholders, but one that might be particularly of interest to you is Dublin residents. Obviously, it's critical for us to gauge and tap into what residents think of the tourism product and how we can relate to visitors. And we're going to have the results here in the next couple of months. I'd like to come back to it so I can give you the results, but just a couple of things of note that I've kind of been a fly on the wall with these... We've had several focus groups, had some online surveys. And it always amazes me, and I've been doing this for 18 years or so, and these surveys are pretty much constant, that how proud the Dublin residents are of this city, you know, and how much they want to show it off to visitors and how much they want to welcome visitors to come to our town and do all the great things that we enjoy on a daily life here in the city. So, it makes our job a heck of a lot easier when residents embrace visitors, and that's just always been the case here. So, we'll keep you updated on that results, and we'll be back, if you don't mind, in a couple of months or so. A couple of quick highlights for Dublin in 2018. Our bureau has nine specific metrics that we use to gauge our success throughout the year. We hit eight of the nine of them, so it was a very successful year in 2018. A couple of real quick highlights from a staff perspective. Last year, staff attracted 101 new trade shows and conferences, generated $2.1 million in revenue for the city, booked 9,000 new hotel remakes. Thanks to council and city staff, we were able to book the 135th Annual National Archery Championship, which actually is coming back again this summer, and actually we've able to attract the collegiate national championship to Dari this summer as well. A 13-to-1 ROI on our regional campaign. We were able to secure Dublin features in 16 television stations in our regional markets, and we've generated 19 million media impressions. So, it was a good year from that standpoint. What I do want to take just a couple more minutes is talk about bed tax. And you've heard about, we've talked over the years, when a visitor comes to the City of Dublin, the impact they have on our community is immense. And one thing they do, obviously, they're coming, they're spending money at our hotels, our restaurants, that's economic impact, they're creating jobs. That stuff is kind of hard to quantify, but one thing that we all agree on is bed tax, we can kind of sink our teeth in, understand the impacts of it, and exactly measure exactly what's going on at the city. So, I wanted to kind of take a minute and just kind of give you a big picture of bed tax and just to kind of refresh everyone's memory. Again, a bed tax, every visitor that stays in the City of Dublin is assessed a bed tax. This is a worldwide thing, this isn't unique to Dublin. Any hotel, any of you have ever stayed at, probably in your life, you've paid some kind of bed tax. It was first established in New York City in the 1940s, and it can be called different things on your hotel bill, when you see it from a hotel bill to transient tax, there's a hotel tax, a TID, which is Tourism Improvement District. It can be called a myriad of different things, but it's used worldwide. And tax laws differ across the world, either. There isn't one percentage, they're all different. Even in Ohio, there's different percentages, so it's very kind of haphazard in terms of what the taxes might be. Most of these taxes are used for marketing and sales purposes. I can tell you, in Ohio, through the Ohio Revised Code, in order to enact a bed tax, a percentage has to go back to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And even that in Ohio ranges from 25% to all the way to 70%. So, it's a wide range of how much money is actually go back to the Convention and Visitors Bureau as well. Here in Dublin, as I noted, there's a 6% bed tax in the city. It was enacted in 1988, and it, you know, coincidence, obviously, that's when the bureau was established in 1988 as well. Our 6% bed tax here in the City of Dublin has generated $52 million alone for the city. And I think it's important to know, when I talk to a lot of friends around town and neighbors, I always say, "This is not a resident tax." I mean, this is purely a visitor tax. Unless you're a resident staying at a hotel, you know, residents aren't paying a penny to this tax. It's purely from a visitor's standpoint. Also, from the bed tax, every time a hotel person stays in the City of Dublin, they're paying a 4% county tax. That's generated almost $34 million since 1988. That, we have not seen, we don't see any of that money. That goes purely downtown to Franklin County, to the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority, that organization oversees, the Hilton Nationwide Arena, the Convention Center as well. So, one thing that I've note too, you add sales tax on top of that, 17.75. We are one of the highest percentage-wise taxed cities in the country, at 17.75. Now, not in terms of dollars and cents, obviously, New York City, Chicago, they're paying a higher amount, they're paying more tax, but in terms of the percentage, in Ohio, us, Cincinnati, I think we're actually in the top 5% of terms of tax. And I think the county tax kind of puts us over the edge with that. It's not a huge competitive disadvantage, but I think when you're looking at groups coming in bulk, sometimes our competitors use that against us. But transient business, it really isn't a major factor at all. To kind of look and see where we've been, we just got the 2018 numbers. I mean, you can see it's been a gradual increase in the last four to five years. We hit a record level this year of $3.4 million in total bed tax. That's a 7% increase over the previous year where we stand. To kind of give you an idea of what factors in bed tax, we have 17 hotels, 2,300 rooms. There's two really key factors that really influence bed tax. One is occupancy rates. That's what you would think it is, the percentage of rooms that are occupied of our 2,300 hotel rooms in the Dublin. And then average daily rate is what the average visitor is paying for a room in the City of Dublin. So, those are two factors that play into it. Occupancy rates, again, this is the percentage of rooms that are occupied. In 2018, we saw a 2% decrease, at 68.1%. You might ask yourself, how in the world can we have a 7% increase in revenue but have a 2% decrease in occupancy? It's mainly because we had new hotels come in on market in 2017. So, we had the Home Two and the AC Marriott come online, so that increased the supply almost 13%, so we had more rooms to fill in the City of Dublin, so therefore the occupancy was going down, yet the number of people and the revenue still increased. To give you an idea, you know, we always compare ourselves to Columbus. Columbus is right around 65% occupancy last year. Average daily rate, again, important, you know, we had an increase of just 1% there, $107 is what the average person pays for a hotel room. Again, the city, Columbus, about $104 as well. So, that's kind of where we stand now. I include a memo in your packet as well on some projections here in the next three years. We are projecting that in the next, next year, actually this year, there'll be a 2% to 4% decrease in bed tax revenue. In 2020, there'll be a 68% decrease, and then in 2021, there'll be about a 4% increase. So, why we're factoring that is, is we found out a couple of weeks ago, three or four weeks ago, that the Crown Plaza is scheduled to close its doors completely, starting in August, or starting in November and then going through August or September the following year. So, that's 10 months of one of our largest hotels being offline. To give you an idea of what that percentage makes, they represent about 10% of our rooms in the City of Dublin, and they represent about 34% of our meeting space in the City of Dublin. So, it's substantial that they're not, you know, going to be online. They're going to be coming back, and I think it's going to be much greater, obviously, it's going to be a better product, and that's why we see the increase in 2021 going in. Other factors that we've looked into considering it of these decreases is the tremendous supply that we've seen, and, you know, we've kind of been warning and looking at this over the last couple of years. It's just been a boom, and this is a nationwide boom in terms of the hotels being built. Here in central Ohio, 59 new hotels have either been built or broken ground in the last, since 2016 up to next year or the end of this year. Even more comparative for us, there's so many new hotels right kind of on our borders. We have three in Marysville, two in Hilliard, five new hotels scheduled in Grove City, and three in Westerville. So, that business obviously is going to compete with us. There's not like 49 or 59 new old hotels are going away. That's on top of what we already have. So, the supply is pretty immense. So, I guess my message leaving on you is, from a bureau perspective, you know, this is unfortunate, it's nothing, and it's anyone's fault, it happens. We prepare for this from the bureau perspective. We have reserves in place. We have, we're actually, since the last three weeks, we have two strategies we've actually already implemented. One is we're working closely with Crown to make sure that we capture any business they're losing and make sure that stays in Dublin. And two, we're making sure that the business does leave Dublin, we can do all we can to get them back in Dublin once they come back online. Marketing and being a marketing person, I think, you know, it's obvious that when times are down is when you need sales and marketing most. So, we're not only going to sustain our marketing next year, we're going to increase it, even though our revenue is going to be down. So, we have reserves in place, thanks to Frank, and our board has looked at that, that we're not going to come back to council and ask for additional monies for this. We prepare for these kind of situations, and we'll be ready to be even more aggressive next year to offset the losses as best we can in the next two, two years or so. That's it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, guys. Any questions from council? Kathy?
The occupancy rates, are those week averages, are those weekday rates or weekend rates?
That's year, in-year annual rates, yeah.
Yeah. And I remember when you were here before talking a little bit about really pushing hard on weekend occupancy, right? Is that going to be one of the strategies to...
No question, yeah. Because what, you know, we look at even on a daily basis, you know, we have an availability calendar at the office, we try to figure out what our times and need are. Monday through Thursday is our biggest time, not time to need, it's our greatest time for the City of Dublin, which is kind of backwards in a lot of communities. Our greatest times and needs are Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So, we're doing all we can to make sure we bring in events, especially during those times. We identify certain weekends that we have throughout the year. Did I push?
I'm sorry. We decide, we identify certain weekends that we have throughout the year as well to see when we can slide in events. So, the weekends have always been a time of need. I think now, with 34% of our meeting space going out, I think it's even greater, because I think there's only so many meetings you could fit in a community when it's 34% of its space, its meeting space is gone as well. So, we'd be working close with the AC, be as creative as we can on that weekday business, but we'll continue to push hard because I think there's opportunity to offset some of that revenue, because there is opportunity in the weekend, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Scott, I wanted to ask you, 34% meeting space disappearing, so as we look at land uses and what our needs might be, what size meeting space is it that they offer that'll be offline, and what size meeting spaces do you need as, from a convention standpoint that we don't have?
Yeah, it's about 15,000 square feet. I mean, what that typically means, it's about 250, 300-person conference, show, dinner, that kind of thing. So, that's the kind of thing that, you know, we need in the market. You know, we've talked with city staff about trying to identify and be aggressive on what kind of, you know, things we need to bring into the community in terms of a limited hotel or a full-serve hotel. There's no question in the last five or 10 years that, you know, we've had a lot, ample increase of limited surf hotels. We lose a lot of business to, you know, Polaris, to Easton, we're losing business to the new Renaissance in Westerville. So, those are the kind of properties and business that we need to try to attract, because in, you know, the, the Exchange is fantastic, it's a great facility, but, you know, they don't have a lot of breakout space, so it limits us a little bit in terms of what kind of events we can bring to that event as well. So, no question, the space, in terms of meeting space, we could definitely use more.
Is the AC Marriott the only hotel that can meet that space? Is that all we have?
The Exchange, you mean?
Oh, well, there is no space inside the hotel?
No, not the AC Marriott.
Oh, really?
Maybe a couple of conference rooms on the first floor, but no.
So, there's nothing other than, is the embassy, is there anything?
The embassy in the Marriott Northwest are similar to the Crown. They have about 14,000 to 16,000 square feet, yeah.
So, those are the only two?
And that makes up, it's really, that's why it's so close, it's like thirds, that's why it's 34%. The three full-serve hotels are very similar in terms of what meeting space they offer.
Okay, that's good to know.
Just one other meeting space that we don't often think of is the space out at OU that's used a lot. Now, that tends to support a lot more the local companies who know about it and use it, but that, that's an example of a meeting space, that whole second floor at OU that is locked up year-round. I mean, it is busy a lot, and they're getting a lot of traction out there, so I don't know if they'll be able to pick up any of that slack during that downtime, but...
Right, right.
Good economic development strategy, right?
For sure.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott, for everything you do.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the January 22nd, 2019 city council meeting. Is there a second?
One second.
Anne?
Ms. Fox?
Mr. Reiner? Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Second reading on ordinances, ordinance 02-19, Anne.
Resonate approximately 13.76 acres located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Blazer Parkway and France Road from OLR to SO.
Jenny Rousch will cover this, Mayor.
Jenny, you are not Logan.
I am not Logan. We look a little different. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This, as you said, is a second reading. There's no changes or updates from the previous reading of this, and we recommend approval.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Anne?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
And these titles are ordinance 0319, determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the City of Dublin, Ohio, in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvements District, Bridge Park D Block Project. Ordinance 0419 is levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving certain public improvements in the City of Dublin, Ohio, in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District. Ordinance 0519 is authorizing and approving an energy project cooperative agreement by and between the City of Dublin, Ohio, Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Bridge Park D Block Commercial Investments LLC, and OREX Public Finance LLC, a special assessment agreement by and between the City of Dublin, the County Treasurer of Franklin County, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., Bridge Park D Block Commercial Investments LLC, and OREX Public Finance LLC and related agreements, all of which provide for the financing of special energy improvement projects.
I'll introduce those three ordinances. Jeremiah?
Good evening, members of council. We're bringing back another property assessed clean energy project. Just to remind, this is, will be our fourth project that we've utilized as special financing for roughly $2.2 million to date. This is...
We had more rooms to fill in the city of Dublin, so therefore the occupancy was going down, yet the number of people and revenue still increased. To give you an idea, you know, we always compare ourselves to Columbus. Columbus is right around 65% occupancy last year. Average daily rate, again important, you know, hit, we had an increase of just 1% there. $107 is what the average person stays, pays for a hotel room. Again, the city Columbus about $104 as well. So that's kind of where we stand now. I include a memo in your packet as well on some projections here in the next three years. We are projecting that in the next, next year, actually this year, there'll be a 2% to 4% decrease in bag tax revenue. In 2020, there'll be a 68% decrease, and then in 2021, there'll be about a 4% increase. So why we're factoring that is, is we found out a couple of weeks ago, three or four weeks ago, that the Crown Plaza is scheduled to close its doors completely, starting in August, or starting in November, and then going through August or September the following year. So that's 10 months of one of our largest hotels being offline. To give you an idea of what that percentage makes, they represent about 10% of our rooms in the city of Dublin, and they represent about 34% of our meeting space in the city of Dublin. So it's substantial that they're not, you know, going to be online. They're going to be coming back, and I think it's going to be much greater. Obviously, it's going to be a better product, and that's why we see the increase in 2021 going in. Other factors that we've looked into considering it of these decreases is the tremendous supply that we've seen, and, you know, we've kind of been warning and looking at this over the last couple of years. It's just been a boom, and this is a nationwide boom in terms of the hotels being built. Here in central Ohio, 59 new hotels have either have been bought or broken ground in the last, since 2016 up to next year, or the end of this year. Even more comparative for us, there's so many new hotels right kind of on our borders. We have three in Marysville, two in Hilliard, five new hotels scheduled in Grove City, and three in Westerville. So that business obviously is going to compete with us. There's not like 49 or 59 new old hotels are going away. That's on top of what we already have. So the supply is pretty immense. So I guess my message leaving, leaving on you is from a Bureau perspective, you know, this is unfortunate, it's nothing, and if it's anyone's fault, it happens. We prepare for this from the Bureau perspective. We have reserves in place. We have, we're actually, since the last three weeks, we have two strategies we've actually already implemented. One is we're working closely with Crown to make sure that we capture any business they're losing to make sure that stays in Dublin. And two, we're making sure that the business does leave Dublin. We can do all we can to get them back in Dublin once they come back online. Marketing and being a marketing person, I think, you know, it's obvious that when times are down is when you need sales and marketing most. So we're not only going to sustain our marketing next year, we're going to increase it, even though our revenue is going to be down. So we have reserves in place, thanks to Frank, and our board has looked at that. We're not going to come back to council and ask for additional monies for this. We prepare for these kind of situations, and we'll be ready to be even more aggressive next year to offset the losses as best we can in the next two, two years or so. That's it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, guys. Any questions from council? Kathy?
The occupancy rates, are those week averages? Are those weekday rates or weekend rates?
That's near, in near annual rates, yeah.
Yeah, and I remember when you were here before talking a little bit about really pushing hard on weekend occupancy, right? Is that going to be one of the strategies to, or?
No question, yeah. Because what, you know, we look at even on a daily basis, you know, we have an availability calendar at the office. We try to figure out what our times and need are. Monday through Thursday is our biggest time, not time to need, it's our greatest time for the city of Dublin, which is kind of backwards in a lot of communities. Our greatest times and needs are Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So we're doing all we can to make sure we bring in events, especially during those times. We identify certain weekends that we have throughout the year. Did I push?
I'm sorry. We decide, we identify certain weekends that we have throughout the year as well to see when we can slide in events. So the weekends have always been a time and need. I think now, with 34% of our meeting space going out, I think it's even greater, because I think there's only so many meetings you could fit in a community when it's 34% of its space is gone, meeting space is gone as well. So we'd be working close with the AC, be as creative as we can on that weekday business, but we'll continue to push hard, because I think there's opportunity that to offset some of that revenue, because there is opportunity in the weekend, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Scott, I wanted to ask you, 34% meeting space disappearing. So as we look at land uses and what our needs might be, what size meeting space is it that they offer that'll be offline? And what size meeting spaces do you need as, from a convention standpoint that we don't have?
Yeah, it's about 15,000 square feet. I mean, what that typically means, it's about 250, 300-person conference, show, dinner, that kind of thing. So that's the kind of thing that, you know, we need in the market. You know, we've talked with city staff about trying to identify and be aggressive on what kind of, you know, things we need to bring into the community in terms of a limited hotel or full-serve hotel. There's no question in the last five or 10 years that, you know, we've had a lot, ample increase of limited surf hotels. We lose a lot of business to, you know, Polaris, to Easton. We were losing business to the new Renaissance in Westerville. So those are the kind of properties and business that we need to try to attract, because, you know, the, the Exchange is fantastic, it's a great facility, but, you know, they don't have a lot of breakout space, so it limits us a little bit in terms of what kind of events we can bring to that event as well. So no question, the space, in terms of meeting space, we could definitely use more.
Is the AC Marriott the only, the only hotel that can, can meet that space? Is that all we have?
The Exchange, you mean?
Oh, well, there is no space inside the hotel?
No, not the AC Marriott.
Oh, really?
A couple of conference rooms in the first floor, but no.
So there's nothing other than, is the embassy, is there anything?
The embassy in the Marriott Northwest are similar to the Crown. They have about 14 to 16,000 square feet, yeah.
Okay, that's good to know.
And that makes up, it's really, that's why it's so close. It's like thirds, that's why it's 34%. The three full-serve hotels are very similar in terms of what meeting space they offer.
Okay, that's good to know.
Just, just one other meeting space that we don't often think of is the space out at OU that's, that's used a lot. Now, that tends to support a lot more the, the local companies who know about it and use it, but that, that's an example of a meeting space, that whole second floor at OU that's, that is locked up year-round. I mean, it is busy a lot, and they're getting a lot of traction out there. So I don't know if they'll be able to pick up any of that slack during that downtime, but.
Right, right.
Good economic development strategy, right?
For sure.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott, for everything you do.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the January 22nd, 2019 city council meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anne?
Ms. Fox?
Mr. Reiner? Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Second reading on ordinances, ordinance 02-19, Anne.
Resonate approximately 13.76 acres located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Blazer Parkway and France Road from O L R to S O.
Jenny Rousch will cover this, Mayor.
Jenny, you are not Logan.
I am not Logan. We look a little different. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This, as you said, is a second reading. There's no changes or updates from the previous reading of this, and we recommend approval.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Anne?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
I make a motion that we waive council rules of order to address ordinances 03-19, 04-19, and 05-19 together. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anne?
Mr. Keenan? Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
And these titles are ordinance 0319, determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio, in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvements Districts, Bridge Park D Block Project. Ordinance 0419 is levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio, in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District. Ordinance 0519 is authorizing and approving an energy project cooperative agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Bridge Park D Block Commercial Investments LLC, and OREX Public Finance LLC, a special assessment agreement by and between the city of Dublin, the county treasurer of Franklin County, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., Bridge Park D Block Commercial Investments LLC, and OREX Public Finance LLC, and related agreements, all of which provide for the financing of special energy improvement projects.
I'll introduce those three ordinances. Jeremiah?
Good evening, members of council. We're bringing back another property assessed clean energy project. Just to remind, this is, will be our fourth project that we've utilized as special financing for roughly $2.2 million to date. This is significantly larger project for Bridge Park Block D at $31,221,000. The project was, is a little different, and it's using the special improvement district of the Franklin, of Columbus Franklin County. However, they will be using us a different financing arm for the actual financing in part. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward, as we've seen in other PACE projects. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Jane?
I just have one. I know that the regional special improvement district falls within the community reinvestment area, right? You can have these districts within, do you have to be a community reinvestment area to have, to be able to ask for the regional special improvement district to apply for PACE? You do not.
My understanding is do not.
You do not. Well, so the reason I ask that question is, I was just wondering whether or not other small business owners, say, within the historic district, or along Bridge Street, or anyone, has the same opportunities to apply for PACE?
Absolutely.
Is that true?
That is.
And it doesn't matter what size, as long as they come to the city and they ask, so they don't have to fall within a certain boundary, community reinvestment area boundary, in order to ask?
They do not, the, deferred legal, but the individual parcel owner asks for the petition, which is part of the legal documents, to be added to that regional special improvement district.
Okay.
And the only, I guess, limitation is Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority prefers the loan to be at least, the project, I'm sorry, to be at least $200,000 for economies of scale in terms of costs, transactional costs essentially.
Oh, I see, so it'd be at least that. And then the boundaries of the regional special improvement district, does it just apply to Block D?
For this particular case, yes.
Yes, okay.
Be the part, the parcels identified in the legal documents, yes.
All right, okay. You answered my question, I think.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This may not be your bailiwick here, but this PACE has a residential component, too. Do we do any of that? Or are we looking into that later?
We have not. It's a topic of conversation nationally on the use of PACE for residential.
Because what it will allow people to do is replace HVAC roofs, other kind of components, meets the program, and they can put it on their taxes.
Yes, so Bexley, I think, has considered it. They're a part of the, the regional group, but ESID, but there's a lot of conversations, the banks themselves.
They're thinking it might be a very useful tool in some of the urban areas where they really need help.
Yeah, yeah.
Jeremiah, I spent some time today on the PACE Nation website, trying to
Sure.
find out some of the rules of this, because all the ones that we have seen thus far have been renovations to existing buildings, and now we are applying it to new construction. So can you tell me a little bit about why it differs to, why this financing is available for new construction? Because most of the vision, Senate Bill 232 looked like it was for reinvestment versus investment.
Yeah. So I can't tell you the exact, I'm going to say statutes or regulatory matters. I can say that we've done through the regional ESID, specifically in downtown, there've been a number of these financing projects that have been funded for new construction. Now, there are some limitations through that. We allow legal counsel and underwriters to go through the details of making sure they stay within those thresholds, but other than that, the, the operation and functionality of PACE itself works the same. The assessment is, you know, biannual, as you would on a reinvestment itself or new construction.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council? Anne? Oh, no, wait, I guess we'll be back on February 25th for a second.
You'll see me back for some resolutions as well.
But we'll come back to this in a minute with resolutions.
Ah, gotcha.
Introduction, resolutions, resolution 07-19, Anne.
Accepting the Historic and Cultural Assessment Prioritized Implementation Recommendations. Introduction.
I'll introduce. Jenny?
So as outlined in your memo, council directed staff to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Architecture Review Board as part of your joint work session in October of this year. So we have reviewed, and I guess the task was looking at the historic and cultural assessment at the implementation recommendations outlined by the consultant, and looking at those items and working with those two boards to prioritize that list and bring it forward to see what we can get accomplished and work together on that. So we took the list of recommendations, there are 16 of them, to the Architecture Review Board in December. They prioritized the list. We discussed that pretty thoroughly, and then we took that to the Planning Commission. They recommended the list in the same order of prioritization as ARB, which, again, looks at a variety of things in terms of provision of resources for educational components, funding, outreach, potential additions or changes, additions to the, either National Register for Individual Properties, or expanding the existing National Register District, as well as then looking at other areas or opportunities for restoration as well, including the cemetery. So with that, we are recommending to council that you approve the list that was prioritized by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Architecture Review Board.
Any questions from council? Jane? Chris?
I have several.
For whatever reason, my surface now just stopped loading. Okay. I'm going to reserve the right to come back to them, because I had them here on my notes, and it won't come up. However, many of the notes were just recommendations to consider.
Okay.
And were they compelled this, I didn't see anything that said, "We need to do this." Did they have, were they compelled on any level to, I read through the meeting minutes, and I, it wasn't clear. What kind of things were most important to them, of things that absolutely need to happen? Because all we got was recommendations to consider.
Okay, so again, they were reviewing the recommendations made by the consultant, which a lot of that requires a little bit more work to understand what the scope of that is. But in the end, the number one item for that would be, that they really talked a lot about, and we've talked about this with previous topics related to the historic district, is outreach, education, making sure people understand what the importance of being in the district, that you, you know, if you're making changes, that you need to go before the board, when that is, who your contact people are. We talked a lot about that at Planning Commission, and Jane can maybe enlighten us as to that discussion as well. That, you know, people, some people don't know that they're in the district, and they find that challenging. And looking at how we can, as a staff, bring that to, to the public and make sure that they're aware of that. That was a big one. The additions or modifications to the district included the consultant, and again, as part of that initial implementation recommendation, looking at what are there other properties that aren't on the National Register that should be considered or should be added? Within the historic district boundary, there is a National Register District, so should we be adding properties to that particular designation, which, again, has significance, again, from a historic perspective, if you're using funding to help you do, to do that? That was something we talked a lot about, and we've talked about that, again, as part of previous, either applications or topics that have come up, particularly at ARB. How do we make sure that we are getting to all these properties, and making sure that they're included and under that scrutiny of the Architecture Review Board to preserve them if needed?
So maybe to ask my question in a little bit different way. It, you know, this is, resolution is titled Historic and Cultural Assessment Recommendations. And what I'm, what I'm fearful of is that we will accept the recommendations, but all of them just say to consider something. So when is it that we will come forward and actually talk about these lists and say, "Here's a list of the properties, and here's how we would prioritize them, putting them on the historic registry," or bringing them into the purview of the ARB? Those concrete kind of steps, when, when does that happen?
So that would be our next step, then. So what, council, as you may recall, accepted these recommendations in total, all 16, of 16 of them, when they, when they accepted the historic and cultural assessment a couple of years ago. So this was then looking at all those, knowing we can't tackle those all at one time, because they, again, a lot of them require some more research to figure that out. Which properties are we talking about? How many are we talking about? What does that even mean? Because, again, their initial survey was looking, almost a windshield survey, so they were walking around, looking around, but they were not on people's particular properties. So we needed, they need to do a little bit more, or staff needs to do some more investigation to determine what those properties are and what that means. So the prioritized list is looking at those initial 16 recommendations that were accepted, and figuring out, okay, we're going to focus on, you know, 1, 2, 3, 5, number 6, and target those this year to find, to find a scope for that, meet with the consultant, meet with the people, and come back with, here, council and ARB and Planning Commission.
Are these recommendations of an order, in order of importance?
Yes, that is their prioritized list. So the initial historic and cultural assessment just listed them, ARB and Planning Commission prioritized them, and the memo, which unfortunately you can't see, outlines what the order of those are.
Okay, and when would you expect to be back with some actionable items? Because, you know, we're in jeopardy of, you know, losing some of these before we get to actually making any decisions. How, how long is that window open?
I mean, some are easier to implement than others, so, I mean, the outreach and education part, that was the number one priority of, of the Architecture Review Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission. The items which they identified, those, a lot of the addition of properties, that's going to take a little bit of time. So I, again, I don't know a specific timeframe, but, again, the goal is to work on these this year and get those implemented as soon as possible, if, if that's what council desires.
I, I thought number five was particularly interested, interesting. Consider implementing a formal update and amendment to the existing Dublin High Street Historic District and making it more preservation-oriented.
Absolutely. So they, that is, in terms, so they had a list of six prioritized, and they grouped 1, 2, 3, and 5 together, which are all of those, looking at these properties, trying to identify which ones should be added to the National Register, updating that overall district. So that was very, very high on their list of things, and those four go together because they all involve a similar line of research.
Great, well, if we could get a memo that would outline maybe a timetable?
Sure, absolutely.
Some of them, obviously, will take longer than others, but of when we might see some activity specific to all of the recommendations.
We can do that.
I think that's a great point, and one of the reasons we did this study was because I think it was the house up on Brand Road, didn't it sort of prompted this, this sense of urgency?
Right.
Where this stuff is like sand slipping through our hands every day. So if we could sort of get a sense of urgency and timelines to come back, I think that would be a good thing.
And it would help us with enforcement for the appearance code and for historic preservation, because that, you know, once we start that process, we'll have a lot, we'll have some teeth.
Yeah.
Do we have any dollars in the budget this year to do any of this work?
So in, within planning's existing budget, we have money within there to do that. So if we were to require consultant services at this point, we don't need any additional funds for that. We should be able to absorb that within our budget.
So, so are these sort of five items then been assigned to staff pending approval by this, and will move forward, I guess?
They will be, right.
So we, we don't have a budget impediment, and we don't have a staffing impediment, so.
I think it's in the book.
No, not, again, at this point, we need to define the scope of that, what that means, how much it's going to cost, who's going to do it. That will all be, and we could include that in the memo, how that's going to all be handled, all the details of that. Okay.
Jenny, one of the things that I was wondering about on, on the sixth priority, the historic stone walls are pretty much owned by the city of Dublin, most of them. They're mostly in the right of ways. And even though it's number six, it doesn't take long for them to disappear from existence within a short period of time. I would recommend that, that since that's a simple one, it wouldn't require much for us to formally say that this is important to us to protect the historic stone walls, especially the ones that are city-owned, that we elevate that to be just considered a done deal. And we have some that, and because of that, and the protection of them, we have some that are falling down that need repair, and I know that they're on Public Works' agenda to fix when we get a group of them. But the quarry wall on Riverside Drive is already tumbling down into the quarry, and there's gaps in it. And I think by elevating this to a priority of something that we can address quickly, we can, we can make sure that we preserve them. So, and the other thing that I would compliment you on in, in the Planning and Zoning and ARB is that many of the items in the 16 are already being addressed in your historic design guidelines. So they will actually go into implementation probably quickly this year and be addressed and handled, so. And the public outreach and education, I'll speak to the fact that that is an important one, because so many people move into the district and have no idea that they're in the historic district, and they'll come in and say, "Well, that's a great old house. I think I'll tear that down and build a brand-new one." And, and, and no realtor is telling them that it's in a historic district, and there they are caught between a rock and a hard place, thinking that they can do that when they, when they'll never be able to do that. So it saves a lot of aggravation and monies from people who come in unexpectedly. So thank you for the work on that.
Absolutely.
Anything else from council? Okay, Anne?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
I make a motion that we waive council rules of order to address resolutions 08-19 and 09-19 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Thanks, Jeremiah. Staff comments, starting with the Dublin Corporate Area Plan Implementation Strategy.
Right, good evening, members of council. Just about, a couple items to bring, few items to bring to your attention tonight. You received in your packet, and as you're aware, there's a memo that addressed the Dublin Corporate Area Plan. As you know, that plan was adopted in September of 2018, and that plan includes an overall strategy encouraging certain uses, mixes, and forms of development that would maintain the viability of the planning area that's been designated by the D cap, as we reference it. Staff's working options and steps for both the short-term and the long-term implementation of this plan, and staff would like to request that this be referred to Community Development Committee for review and guidance regarding the next steps for the effective implementation of that plan.
Then I will make such a motion to refer the Dublin Corporate Area Plan Implementation Strategy to the Community Development Committee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anne?
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms?
Yes.
Any other questions from council? Anne?
This is Resolution 0819, I mean, 0919. Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Aluto.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Thanks, Jeremiah. Staff comments, starting with the Dublin Corporate Area Plan Implementation Strategy.
Right. Good evening, members of council. Just about a couple items to bring, few items to bring to your attention tonight. You received in your packet, and as you're aware, there's a memo that addressed the Dublin Corporate Area Plan. As you know, that plan was adopted in September of 2018, and that plan includes an overall strategy encouraging certain uses, mixes, and forms of development that would maintain the viability of the planning area that's been designated by the D cap, as we reference it. Staff's working options and steps for both the short-term and the long-term implementation of this plan. And staff would like to request that this be referred to Community Development Committee for review and guidance regarding the next steps for the effective implementation of that plan.
Then I will make such a motion to refer the Dublin Corporate Area Plan Implementation Strategy to the Community Development Committee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anne?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Aluto.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
In the spirit of getting the mileage we need out of the council's development committee, we have another item we'd like to refer to them as well. You had a memo in your packet referencing the ongoing economic development strategy update that's being conducted between our staff and Techonomy Partners LLC. Throughout this project, staff wanted to engage council's community development committee as sort of check-ins as this project unfolds, to get feedback and have discussion, and to together formulate a recommendation that would come forward to council. We estimate that would all be done probably after your recess, summer recess, probably in early August, but there would be, we think, as many as three check-ins prior to that. And we'll get a rhythm going. And the reason I gave you this in your board pack late, I apologize, but also left at your chair, I know it's not easy to read, but the point of this is just to show a rhythm for the Community Development Committee and other committees, and we need to do the same thing. I've held off so far in suggesting a schedule for council committees and for workshops, kind of pending the outcome of your upcoming retreat. But this one, I think, references as soon as March 4th, coming before Community Development Committee, at least for an orientation as to the study and some initial findings, to get some feedback, and then get into a rhythm after that. So, staff is requesting that this be referred to council's Community Development Committee.
I make a motion that we refer the update to the economic development strategy to the Community Development Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Aluto.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan.
Okay, thank you for that. We appreciate it. Also, in your packet, there was a request to remove the basic plan from the table. You might recall that the residences at taller heights were before you back in August of 2018. You provided some feedback to them. Staff's been working with that applicant, and they are requesting that it be removed from the table at this meeting and then be rescheduled for the February 25th, 2019 City Council meeting, so that they may come back and present to you some of the changes that they're proposing.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Ms. Aluto.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Just a couple other items. We gave quite a bit of information in your, other information in your packet, a lot of different staff reports, but just a couple things to highlight. You may see that the engaged committee awards application did get submitted, we think, in a timely fashion. We picked the one project to focus on as opposed to trying to do too much, to see how we might do in this first round. So, I hope that you were pleased with that proposal. Also, there was a follow-up memo reference to council's request that presentations be loaded prior to council meetings. We are working in that vein, and I want to thank council member DeRosa and her partnership in working through that and helping to sort of lay some ground rules around that, and I hope that that will work for everyone. Would also say that this kind of raised the issue, Michelle and I have been looking at the possibility of some changes to our staff report formats. I think there's some things that we can do a little bit differently in conjunction with presentations, so you may see a change in format, or we may propose that to you as some examples before we shift to that as well. And then, the last item I would raise, although there's many in here we could talk about, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, was a transfer of the duties from the planning staff to the clerk of council was achieved in accordance with your direction by the end of the year. And I want to thank both the Division of Planning, I want to thank the clerk's, clerk of council's office, Anne, and her team for making that transition happen. And, of course, this is a work in progress, so we'll iron out all the different issues that may arise in that process as we go forward. And other than any questions you have, that's, that's all I have this evening.
Thanks, Dana. Committee reports, P and Z. Jane? Admin, Chris?
You should have all received a copy of the agenda for your review for the, for our retreat, and responded with, to Michelle, with anything that you felt needed to be on there that wasn't, or anything that was on there that you felt shouldn't be. So, hopefully, you have taken that opportunity. Look forward to our retreat. It will be held, so the public is aware. We will hold it at our new city hall. We're going to go over there and have the first meeting in that building, as far as I know of council. So, it will be held there. It'll be February 21st and 22nd. It is open to the public, and they are welcome. We have our performance reviews scheduled on the 27th, and we're still looking at boards and commissions interviews. We're, we've just closed the window on the applications, so once we vet those and do some checks, we'll forward that information to you as well.
Thanks, Chris. Community Development Committee, John?
Yes, the Community Development Committee met on February the 4th, and there was two items of major in business, the review of the proposed amendment to the Bridge Street District Review and its approval process. And after some really great lengthy conversation by my two colleagues, and some feedback from Vince, they're going to give some information back on exactly how they can approve that, and so we'll wait for their information. The next item was the review of Code Section 152 of the subdivision regulations, fee in lieu of land dedication. And it was pretty much unanimously agreed that number five in your review, the summary, required the developer to pay a fee in lieu of, based on the individual appraisal of the city to be reimbursed by the developer, was the selected choice by the committee. And so, I don't know if we need a motion for that or not to approve that.
You'll get a code amendment on that.
Pardon?
A code amendment on that.
Okay.
As well as the minutes and all from your meeting?
In our next meeting, or will we vote then?
How's that?
That's, uh, planning's, I think, planning's going to happen.
I'm not sure it'll be next meeting. It might be the following.
Check on that.
Okay. And that winds up that discussion. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Finance, Mike. Public Services, Christina?
Nothing.
Cota, Kathy?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the leadership at Cota for stepping up last month when communities were working out ways to help our neighbors and fellow residents that were impacted by the partial federal shutdown. Cota provided free bus services for those that were impacted by that. So, thankfully, the shutdown ended, and so, you know, that was a short period of time, but I really think it does highlight how the community stepped up. And if I can, Mr. Mayor, I would also add that, at this point as well, that to really commend both the City of Columbus and the City of Dublin for doing the same thing, for reaching out and looking at things like water bills and other things that we could do to help those that were impacted by that. So, I appreciate the work of the staff, and again, thankfully, it was a very short window, but, but I appreciate that, and I, it just goes to show really how the community works together, and I, I thought that was wonderful. So, I just wanted to take a moment to thank people for that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Dublin Community Foundation, Chris?
Yes, we met last week. We are starting a new grant cycle. All of the information is available on the Dublin Community Foundation website for interested parties that would be looking for grants made by that organization.
Thanks, Chris. Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
Nothing this month.
Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Chris?
Um, I have nothing.
Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Nothing to report.
How about U.S. 33 Innovation Corridor?
You want to...
Kathy Orger.
Well, I'll add a couple things, and you can add a couple things.
Go ahead.
Okay. We had a meeting the other, the other day, and we had a nice conversation from Brad Bodenmiller, who gave us an update on the draft, that, and I can pass it around, they, they put the overlay, which to just, the overlay plan, which just give you a little background on that, is a mechanism that we're, that the group is utilizing to try to create a cohesive land use along the 33 corridor, that having to do with landscaping, lighting, aesthetics, incompatible land uses, like they're trying to keep out truck stops and adult kinds of uses, residential, storage site, junkyards, things like that, so that the entire 33 corridor has a cohesive look. And they're, they're in the midst of getting some sort of agreement on the plan. Right now, they're looking at the partials that would border the 33 corridor. And Kathy, you can clarify this, but there, there are, when it comes to some of the aesthetics, the legal, of Union County, the legal department is looking into whether or not we could apply some of these restrictions. So, that's yet to come back to, to the 33 corridor group. So, it is moving along. I think we're making some progress.
Yeah, I think there was, and the other main topic of conversation, and Dana and staff included a memo, some updates of the Consumer Electronics Show, and just the real interest in what's going on for automated vehicles and really smart city movement. So, I think it really is an example of folks realizing that there really is wonderful things we can do here cooperatively. So, we're moving ahead on that, and I appreciate, I'll take that opportunity to comment there, appreciate the memo on the Consumer Electronics Show and the background in that, because it certainly looks like we have a lot of opportunity up and down that corridor, and, and the group's working hard and, I think, well together. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Dublin Arts Council, John?
Want to remind you all to have a placeholder for May the 3rd, Dublin Arts Council, big fundraiser, which is the Garden Party, 6:30 to 9:30, always a great time.
And that'll be at the place, with the Joffe Place on 33?
No.
No, it's probably going to be over in OCLC, right?
OCLC.
Yeah.
May 3rd.
Great party.
Right.
Great food.
Is that it on Arts Council?
That's it.
Board of Education, Christina?
Uh, nothing.
Washington Township, chief, you got anything for the good of the order? Dublin Bridges Liaison, Jane?
Nothing since my last report, thank you.
We're going to stay right down there with you for council roundtable. Kick it off.
Okay. Just a comment, so many things we're utilizing the committee structure, which I like, because it gives a good opportunity to talk about some heavy discussions and substantial topics. But one of the things that I would request of council is that when we do bring back things from committee, that, I don't know if we're taking minutes, are we taking minutes at these committee meetings? Okay. That we have the opportunity to have discussions instead of just bringing it to council and say, this is a recommendation, and let's just, because the rest of council doesn't have an opportunity to have any discussions at the committee meetings, we're not allowed to, because we would be a quorum. And, and I think it's important that because they are substantial topics, and we have great interest in them as a council as a whole, that we have some time to talk about them. So, I want to make sure that we don't just say, well, they recommended this, and let's just do it. I know it doesn't always happen that way, but I guess, since we're starting this committee process, that I think we need to have time to actually vet out the topic.
If I may, I really appreciate that comment, and I think one of the things we ought to determine when we schedule these things out is how can these things, these things, these, this activity of committee, sort of culminate perhaps in a workshop session of council as a whole, get a little bit more discussion in there even before it, out to slow things down, but particularly for those, there may be those things that could come to a council and you could have enough discussion, but those things that you really feel, or the committee feels, or the council feels warrants more discussion, you could kind of tee them up in a work session as, as an example, so.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Kathy?
Thank you very much. Again, thank you to Dana and staff for their work on adding the presentations to council meetings, et cetera. I really think that helps us, and I've really appreciated the, the timeliness and the breadth of the materials provided. So, thank you very much. And then, I wanted to, I, I see Megan's not here this evening. She's probably out still doing street maintenance, but I just wanted to thank her staff. We've had more than one weather opportunity here over the last few weeks, and the staff is out there at 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM, and in my cul-de-sac, always at 4:00 AM, so, but I very much appreciate that and the work that they're doing, because it's been a challenge. So, I just wanted to say thank you on that. And then, I, I noticed in the memos that we have a Lime Bike Pilot update. Could you share a little bit more about that? Because I was, I was a little disappointed to, to read that they're not going to continue that, so...
Right, I guess I'll ask Nick, if you don't mind, for Nick Plouffe to come forward and talk a little bit about that.
Hi, members of council, good evening. So, we, we received a, a letter from Lime, maybe a month or two back, letting us know that they made a decision, decision to end their pilot with us sometime here in the late or early spring. The crux of that decision was mainly just due to the sort of ridership that they were getting at the level here in the City of Dublin, and I think similar to what they were seeing in Worthington, as far as the numbers, it just didn't make sense for them to sort of stick around. The amount of rides that they were getting per day, per bike, within, within sort of the suburb area. So, it was something that they wanted to try out, to see what that model looked like, how it worked for their community, and this was a decision they made moving forward.
I think, I would add that I think it served a great purpose in terms of gathering some data. We really appreciate Lime's effort and their partnership and doing some beta testing out here with that. Learned a lot from it. I, I think, too, that there are some areas we kind of wished they had deployed that they didn't. So, those could be some things that are areas that we may want to take on ourselves to, to take a look at. So, I think, as Nick alluded to in the memo, we're going to step back and take a look at this and see if there aren't other approaches that we might be able to apply. I don't think we want to give up on the opportunity to try to do this. There is, you know, potentially some other success that we might could have with it, so we'll continue to work on that.
They're staying in Columbus, I'm assuming, but not the suburbs? Is that what you're saying, or do we not know that from their communication?
As far as we know, they didn't really, they weren't very interested in sharing more details around what their future plans are for the region, but it was free of cost for the city, and we got some really, really outstanding data to sort of help inform our decisions going forward as far as bike share and some other opportunities as well.
I have a quick question when it comes to data sharing. So, were we able to understand where the highest uses of the bikes were, how they deployed them from ones, I know when they first started, they said they, they would use their data to put them in one place, and if that didn't show ridership, that they would move it to another. Did they do that? Can we tell that they did that through the data? Did you think that we got the kind of data we were hoping to get with having Lime Bike here, or how would you improve it if we brought someone else in, too?
Sure, so, I'll, I'll answer that in, in sort of two parts. We, we did get really strong data, letting us know where the highest use of the bikes were, where people tended to take those trips, about how far they tended to take a trip, which was about just over a half of a mile. The, the highest use areas were sort of over by the Recreation Center, Bridge Park and Historic Dublin. And then, you did have a little bit of activity around some of the other parks. Now, when they sort of came in, the way they explained their, the way they go about their business, like you said, is they try, they're supposed to leverage that data to inform where they move the bikes to and from. We did not see that take place. We took calls with them regularly, weekly, monthly, to discuss opportunities for them to reposition and to be moving those around. As far as we saw, we did not see them moving them very often. We sort of asked them why, but they indicated that they were happy with the way things were going at that time. So, this was a bit of a surprise for us, but we did get really strong data. We do know the areas that they, that people tended to ride their bikes, which will be very helpful moving forward as we consider some of the other bike share options that exist within our region and sort of outward.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Kathy?
Yeah, thank you.
John?
Yeah, I got the nineteen, or the 2018 OPRA Awards Excellence Winners, and that's the Ohio Parks and Recreation Program. And I want to tell you that, and this is a city council initiative, but Glacier Ridge Challenge Park came in number two over at the Metro Park. So, congratulations for everybody who was involved in working on that. And then, I want to wish Nancy Richardson a happy birthday tomorrow.
Nancy's birthday.
Thank you.
T minus four hours.
Tomorrow.
Thank you.
Is that it, John? Michael?
I just had a quick question.
Somebody, a resident, asked me today about the Katzenmiller, Katzenmoyer, the deli that was supposed to go in over at my Napa?
Catsingers.
What is it?
Catsingers.
Do we know anything about that? Anybody?
I just met with the owner about a week or so ago, I know they're under construction.
Oh, they're, it's definitely coming.
I'm not sure exactly what the status of the, I can't recall what his opening plan was, I just can't recall the date, but I know that they're in there actually working.
Good, that'll be a nice addition for us. And then, just as an aside, anecdotally, one of our people in the office put their house up one day, the next day, they had 12 showings, seven contracts, it sold for 16 over list in Hemingway. I took my son over to Mid-Century, he took me over, rather, and we looked at property over there. On Saturday, we had a time to be there for the showing, and there were six other realtors there, this was not an open house, bringing people through, and then the next day on the open house, it was just a parade. So, I mean, it's just unbelievable, the market, there's not enough housing stock, and the realtors are going crazy, and people are paying well over list, and it's quite a, quite an interesting phenomenon, so, anyway, I just thought I'd share that.
Thanks, Mike. Christina?
Yeah, Michelle, I have a question, and maybe this might be more of a Christine question, but you can relay it to her and let me know. When do you think we will get an update on some of the Aging in Place initiatives that we have? For example, the transportation pilot, the Alexa device, as well as the sort of installation of the hub with Centaro?
I'm not as familiar with the share and the senior circulator, but I can get, we can get you something in your next council packet related to that. We just got the results back from the Alexa project, we surveyed both Centaro's clients that were using those and the volunteers, and incredible results came back from that, so we can get that to you. And we know that Centaro has advertised positions for the senior navigators that they're gonna offer hours on Fridays and Saturdays as a pilot of that, so we can get you an update on that as well.
Yeah, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Chris?
I wanted to highlight a couple things, the achievements and awards, Angel for her CPFO, and Mary Jo Salvo in being the marketer of the year of the 2018 Achievement and Marketing Award, so I thought that was
Wow.
pretty exciting. The Engage Cities Award application, just wanted to thank Jane for bringing that to our attention and for Christine to executing, being one of the 10 finalists in that. We'll look forward to the three selected champions and hope for the best for that. I did receive a question this week about the Ferris Right signage, and would that be gated for, we don't have hours posted, like we have many of our parks, that it closes at sunset or at some particular time, and I didn't know if we were going, if, like many of our parks, if that would be gated in the off-hours, and one of the adjacent neighbors on Grandy Cliffs had asked about that, and as I read the construction outlook, it looked like we were wrapping that up, and it was, it indicated that there would be plant warranties and things like that, so wanted to see about the construction end of that and what additional work we thought would be happening there. Wanted to thank Ann and the clerk's office for taking the, over as we directed with the note-taking for the boards and commissions, and really appreciate your willingness to be flexible in waiting to see what our staffing needs would be, rather than to staff it and hope that it was that much work. We're going to see how much of work it's going to be before we staff it, so appreciate that. There was a memo in here, I had asked questions about the TIF payment revenue and the decline that we noticed, and it was really well organized and laid out, so I appreciate that feedback. The only additional thing I would ask about that is if maybe it wouldn't be wise for us in future years, not for this year, but to kind of have a heat map on where these TIF changes are happening, and it might show us some areas of our community that might need more attention, or we might need to proactively get into a space if we saw a heat map and said, these TIFs are, these property values in this area aren't appreciating at the same rate that these others are, and maybe start to ask ourselves why and how we might be able to stand in that gap. And thank you to Angel for going online with the Ohio checkbook. I think that was one of the top, first three questions I asked when I was new on council, and so I'm very excited that that's coming to fruition, so thank you for that. A couple other things, I wanted to congratulate the Dublin Women's Philanthropic Club, on the 26th, they had their annual fundraiser, Greg and I both attended, and it was really, it had a, it was sold out, and they had a really lovely event. Would like to publicly thank the Bexley City Council. Deviani and I went to visit, they have, interestingly, on the first night of their retreat, they bring in a speaker from another community and to share some ideas and thoughts about what they're doing. And I was fortunate enough to be invited to be the speaker at Bexley's, they do theirs Friday night and Saturday, so we went to the Friday evening, Deviani and I did, and it was really lovely to meet other electeds and hear about the issues that they're facing and share with them, some of our challenges and some of our victories, so I appreciate that. Wanted to congratulate Steve Norden for being named as our grand leprechaun. Can't think of a more suitable leprechaun, except he's really tall. That's the only, that's the only part of him not being suitable for being a leprechaun. Everything else is spot on. And I wanted to thank Amy Cram and the East Dublin Civic Association for really just continuing to do the work, hard work of community engagement and making sure that they are understanding and participating in what's going on and they're part of the community. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. I would echo your comments about Steve, I know Chief was instrumental in that, he is fantastic, he's a fantastic selection, he has served this community, and generally, he needs to be in a place where it's a very difficult or challenging circumstance, and he always shines and represents himself and our police department and our community exceptionally well. The other thing, is there any reason Dana and I couldn't mention the thing about the naturalization? I don't think.
Please, go ahead.
I was approached by Chief Judge Ed Sargus, is the chief judge for the Southern District of Ohio in federal court, and he does the naturalization ceremonies for people that are becoming United States citizens, and he asked, he lives here in Donegal Cliffs, wonderful man, and his wife, Jenny, they're fantastic. He asked me if there was a way that we could help him do a naturalization here in Dublin, and so, of course, I picked up the phone and called two people, I called Dana and I called Dr. Hoadley, and they were both terrifically supportive, and I greatly appreciate their support. So if you could please put on your calendars, March 19th at 1 o'clock in the afternoon at Sayoda High School, there will be 150 people sworn in as new United States citizens. Judge Sargus asked me to come down and speak to one of these ceremonies that he had run a couple of years ago, and you will not meet prouder Americans than these people that are sworn, they, they are beaming with pride, and they have a knowledge and a commitment to this country that is, it is truly astounding, and it is a very really moving ceremony, and I would strongly encourage you to attend, March 19th, at Sayoda High School at 1 o'clock. It will be a very, it'll be an experience you will not forget, and it will make you proud to be an American. And tried to come up with relevant comments when I was down speaking to the group a couple of years ago, and one of the things I found was a statement that none of our founding fathers were born Americans. So that should say it all. And with that, we are adjourned.